Good evening, everyone of the Shire of Jinjin. That's all residents and business owners within this fantastic shire that we all reside in. My name is Rick. I am the chief astronomer here at the Gravity Discovery Centre Observatory, just down the road in Yeele. Now, I'm here for night number two for our virtual town hall meeting. Now, what that actually means is tonight and also tomorrow night, but also back on Monday night, we had a virtual town hall meeting, which we're here to explain all about the upcoming Jinjin Dark Sky Reserve. Now, what that means is we're actively protecting the night skies above us and surrounding us from the scourges of light pollution. And this is a great forum for you guys out there to find out a little bit more about what is going on with the Dark Sky Reserve proposal, because this is going to affect, well, pretty much everyone that lives in the Shire of Jinjin, because we are set to become the world's, well, not the world's first, that's a bit much, Western Australia's first international dark sky reserve. That will be recognised all around the world. Now, oh, something's not happening there. I hope I'm working. Anyway, it looks like it's working. So, I'm flying this ship solo tonight. My trusty co-pilot Mitch has been called off to, out to Bolgart this evening, and we are hoping that he's gonna have a good night out there. So, anyway, without further ado, what I'm going to do is I'm going to change over to a different screen, and we're gonna have a bit of a presentation, and hopefully all goes well. I'm hoping my signal gets out there. Looks like we do have three viewers. Oh, one more thing, if you are viewing this from either of our platforms, especially from our YouTube channel, which I'm currently broadcasting to, but also, I think we're also doing our Facebook as well. It told me, the machine told me as we're going out there. Please, if you've got any comments or if you have any questions, just type them in the comment section, and I will try and address them. If I can't, if I can't multitask, because I am a guy after all, and multitasking is just not one of our things, but just the same, what I will do is I will answer your questions either on the hop or a little bit later on. So, if you do have a question about the Dark Sky Reserve, how you can get involved, what does it mean, how much is it gonna cost? Well, that's a wonderful thing, it's not gonna cost you guys anything. We've, we've pretty much done all the hard yards, but all we need is the community support, and you guys to talk about it more, and also to support any sort of changes we make within the lighting structure in, not just Jinjin itself, but also up along Savanties and Gilderton and all the other places, wonderful coastal habitats where humans like to reside. Anyway, I'm gonna change screens, because you don't wanna watch my mug yak away all night, so you'll just have to hear my dulcet tones. Now, I will just have to flick the screens over like this. There we are. For some reason or another, I gotta hope this is working. Let me just try and re, hang on a minute. Tonight's the 20th, isn't it? Yes, it is. So, why isn't this working? Let me just try this again. Here we are. Doesn't look like I'm, that I'm actually on. Oh, okay. Now, let me just check our Facebook page before I start in on this. I'm just gonna double-check in a couple of things, make sure it's actually working. God, I hope so, because if not, I'm kinda just talking to myself, and I feel a bit ridiculous. Mind you, I talk to myself all the time, so there's no real problem there. But, but this is kind of important. Anyway, let me just double-check this. I'll be with you guys in just a moment. Do we have anything going out? Doesn't look like it. Let me just double-check this here. There's gotta be something here. Oh, yes. Apparently, it's working. And I've also got my YouTube channel on here, no, not YouTube, Facebook. So, if anyone wants to comment on the Facebook as well, comment away, that'd be great. Okay, so without further ado, let's talk about the Jinjin Dark Sky Reserve. Now, this is creating the dark sky capital of Western Australia, because you know what? WA's got all these amazing places. You know, you go down to Margaret River, it's the wine region, or you go down to Pemberton, it's the tall timber country, and the magnificent south coast down near Albanian Esperance, and of course, the coral coast, and up towards Exmouth and Broome, and all the, all these other wonderful places. But you know what? Jinjin really needs something to hang their hat on, and I believe this is it. To actually make, make us the dark sky capital of Western Australia. Now, I mean, it's not the darkest skies you're ever gonna get, but it's pretty darn close. It's close because the skies are wonderfully dark. It is a wonderful natural resource you guys have out here, that we have out here, because hey, I'm out here too. But it also is close to Perth. Now, what we're hoping to do with this is not just protect our astronomical endeavours we have here, research, education, cultural heritage, et cetera. We also wanna bring in those tourist dollars, and those tourist dollars are very, very important. So, if we can start making up there with like Margaret River, the wine re, wine region, let's make Jinjin the dark, dark sky capital of WA. And we're here to do that and give it a red-hot try. Oh, hello, we have a question down here. I'm just going to see if I can shove this across and get a bit more of this. Hello, from Rahim Yonova. Hello, everyone. Anyway, let's see if we got any comments down in Facebook land? No, we don't. We've got five people watching, well, that's better than none, so I'm happy with that. Anyway, without further ado, let's click to the next slide if it works. There we go. So, what is a dark sky reserve? Well, I'm glad you asked. An international dark sky reserve is an area possessing exceptional dark starry skies that is specifically protected for its scientific, educational, cultural heritage, and nocturnal environment. And we tick all those boxes. In fact, we more than tick all those boxes. This, this up, region up here is absolutely fantastic. Like I said, an hour's drive north of Perth, you don't have to drive for hours to get out to dark skies. You've got not just dark skies here, an hour's drive north of a major capital city, but you also have a, the premier public observatory in WA. So, coupled that, what we've got here with dark skies, great telescopes, and fantastic staff, qualified staff too, I might add, we are set to deliver all sorts of wonderful astronomical goodies to the community and to the world. So, for science, what we're trying to protect here is we have astronomical research collaborations from all around the world. So, we have the University of Western Australia and Osgrave. Now, UWA has one of the largest telescopes, in fact, it is the largest telescope in Western Australia. It is the one-meter Zadko Telescope that both UWA and Osgrave use. We also have the Japanese Space Agency, so JAXA are also on site. We also have the Polish Space Agency, Polsa. We also have the Airbus Ariane Group, and also we have a telescope from the US Air Force Academy. So, we have all these different collaborations going on here on site, and we're hoping not just to attract more, well, yeah, we are hoping to attract more, because we really, really want to do a lot of science, because Western Australia, in fact, Perth is a very unique longitudinal observational point. So, if you imagine that the Earth is divided up like an orange, and you have the lines running from the North Pole to the South Pole, and the Earth is divided up into those lines of longitude, well, if you go, start off on the East Coast, you have a whole bunch of observatories over there, Siding Springs in Coonabarabrand, you have Tas, Tasmania at the Canopus Observatory, Mount Stromlo in Canberra, et cetera. And then hop across the Indian Ocean to South Africa, and of course, you have the South African Large Telescope. And in between, there is Perth, there is WA, and of course, the only observatory that is actually doing any meaningful astronomical research is us, here at the Gravity Precinct in Jinjin. So, we wanna continue that, and we wanna cement that, because we do have dark skies that are conducive for astronomical research, and keep them that way too. Education, because, well, we promote science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, astronomy, astrophysics, local cultural astronomy. So, the Gravity Discovery Centre and Observatory is the perfect place to teach and inspire future scientists in the fields of optical and radio astronomy, astrophysics, gravitational wave astronomy, and physics. And that's just not limited to that as well. We also can teach biology and botany and all sorts of other things, and cultural awareness, because we are geared up for that. We also, cultural heritage as well, protecting local sky stories and culture. So, the Gravity Discovery Centre, we're currently working together with the local Yewed and Wajuk elders to preserve and to continue the traditional sky stories, that these sky stories are intertwined amongst the dark dust lanes of the Milky Way Galaxy, and also the stars as well. And it's of vital importance to keep these stars bright and to able, ability to see the Milky Way, to keep these stories going. The nocturnal environment, so protecting our precious ecosystem. So, the Jinjin Dark Sky Reserve seeks to protect the local wildlife, bird, insect, amphibian, and coastal marine life, that form an integral part of our unique ecosystem. Because the local wildlife, we'll just call it wildlife instead of me rattling off all those other types, and human health as well, can be affected by light pollution. And light pollution is a major problem across the globe, and I'll tell you the, the real problems with light pollution coming up in this talk. But also, science tourism. Now, it's one thing to go to a place and check it out, and you know, have a look around and do the touristy things, but this is a case of, well, why make it an experience when you can make it a learning experience? So, science tourism is attracting local, national, and international visitors, and of course, attracting it to WA's premier public, public astronomical observatory. So, not only do we can we show people the stars and far-off galaxies, and star clusters, and nebulae, and all sorts of things, we actually have people here on site. So, the, so the visitors have access to researchers and guided by qualified astronomers and astrophysicists as well. So, and also, we also have research observatories, which the public can visit occasionally when they do come up here, and we have a full moon, because we work together well with the Zadko team. Now, what is light pollution? I'm sure a lot of you know what light pollution is. It has been on everyone's minds of late, because we do notice a very large glow coming to the south if you live up here in Jinjin. So, down towards the south, you will see this glow coming from Perth and the northern suburbs. But light pollution is the presence of unwanted, inappropriate, or excessive artificial light at night. Now, artificial light at night, or what we call "alan," is a real problem, not just here in Western Australia, but all around the world. There are some cities in the, around the world where you barely even get to see a star, a single solitary star. In fact, the only star you can see is during the day, and that's the sun. And even in some countries, that's a bit difficult to see with so much smog, so much air pollution. But here in Western Australia, and Australia, I should say, we are very, very, very lucky that we do have the skies that we have because of the low population, but also, a lot of it tends to hug the coast. But just the same, with proper education and demonstration, but also government policies, we are hoping to reduce that amount of light pollution coming from Perth and all the surrounding suburbs, and make our night darker. Now, a lot of people are fearful of the dark, and that's fine, that's an inherent part of who we are. We're always fear of the unknown, but you're actually safer in the dark, trust me. I'll explain a little bit later on. So, this is light pollution, this picture here, as we can see, this is the light pollution from Perth. Now, one way to look at that light pollution is millions of dollars of electricity is being used to light up the night sky where the light, where the light is not wanted or certainly not needed. So, millions of dollars of electricity has been consumed every single year due to inefficient, badly designed, overly-used light at night, artificial light at night. And of course, its repercussions extend, this sky glow that we see here can extend for tens to hundreds of kilometers away from its point source. And that causes a real problem, not just for the people living within, but also for the people and the creatures living in the surrounding environment outside. But also, another way to look at this is millions of tons of fossil fuels are being consumed every single year, contributing to global warming and climate change. Now, this is an environmental disaster going on right above our heads, especially the people living down in Perth and the northern suburbs, and most of us are oblivious to it, because we spend most of our nighttime hours indoors. But you've all seen yourselves, especially here at Jinjin, you go out your own backyard, and you can see the Milky Way blazing overhead. Do you really want to lose that? We've lost it down in Perth. I remember as a kid, they used to turn the streetlights off at 1:30 in the morning, but thanks to a deal brokered by the then-state government and the local councils down there, and also the, the power providers, they brokered a deal to keep the streetlights burning all night for road safety and security, which is actually a load of nonsense, because last time I checked, cars have headlights, and if you drive without your headlights, you'll be seeing some red and blue lights in your rearview mirror, and probably get slapped with a fine for driving without your headlights on. So, you can see the problem right there. Moving on. So, this artificial light at night stems from streetlights, car yard lights, school security lights, sports recreational overlights, and other architectural lights that may light up buildings, churches, trees, whatever. And of course, it produces this sky glow. And of course, there's vast amount of streetlights within the Perth metro area. This is the effect. So, it affects all, it affects human health, wildlife behaviour, and severely impacts the science of optical astronomy. Now, I have to say that, because, well, I'm an optical astronomer, and it does affect what we do up here, not just for the teaching, not just for research, but also for cultural heritage, but also for the local environment. And from large cities like Perth and its suburban surrounds, a sky glow from light pollution is visible from tens to hundreds of kilometers away. And of course, from Jinjin and the GDC precinct, the sky glow is mostly restricted, but not limited to a dome of light on the southern horizon. Now, we are hoping that we can keep it that way. In fact, even better if we can actually cause that light pollution to actually drop down, to stop increasing and actually reduce, which would be absolutely fantastic if we could actually do that. And, you know, then we have a darker night, and people will probably get a better sleep, and I'll explain why in just a moment. But protecting our night sky for us is paramount, and we are gonna do it, because we are, we passionately believe that the night sky is not just a part of who we are, but it's a part of our heritage, and we also need to connect with it, because it instills a sense of awe and wonder to see the Milky Way blazing across the sky in the middle of winter, and also summertime, there's nothing better than sitting out in your backyard marveling at the stars with a colde in one hand and a, you know, barbecue going in the background. So, you know, it's a fantastic place in which you live here in Shire of Jinjin, and also the surrounds, we need to keep it dark. Now, what causes light pollution? I might have explained that before, but I'm gonna reiterate, here we are. Public enemy one, two, and three, the humble streetlight. Yep, this streetlight is, boy, oh, boy, there are lots of them around. And of course, we're all familiar with the old-style design, the famous Cobra Head Light, where you have a lens, a glass lens protruding from the bottom. And of course, that glass lens helps to diffuse the light over a larger area. Now, as we look in the diagram down here, we have an area to be lit. I wanna see if this actually works, I'll just find my cursor, it's gone somewhere, there it is, and it should show up. We have this area to be lit, there it is, and that is the useful cone of light. You might be able to see my mouse dragging across the screen. But this dome here becomes a little bit overzealous, and it starts to create what's known as a glare zone. So, this poor fellow here, you may not be, be able to read what he's screaming out, but it says "my freaking eyeballs," because they do provide glare. The light from these things is horrifically bright. It also produces something called "light trespass." Now, if you're down in Perth, or maybe up in Jinjin, and you do have a streetlight inconveniently placed out the front of your house, right near your bedroom window, you get this light coming in all night, and it could be a major problem, because it could stop you from sleeping. But the worst and most insidious form of light pollution is either from the reflection off the ground or caused by this bulb scattering light in an upward direction to create something called "sky glow." And as we saw in the previous slide, how sky glow can be compounded by vast amounts of poorly-designed streetlights. So, this light pollution here is what we can see from miles around, and what affects our vision of the universe. Now, I'll just go back to here, there we are. Now, they're starting to roll out these new LED lights. Now, they're a bit better designed, because the LEDs do have a small lens at the front, and they do use their light more efficiently, i.e. they do drop the light down to where it is needed, and they do create a useful cone of light with very little upspill. However, they do have their own problems. They are too bright, but also the colour coming off them is a major problem, and I'll explain why. Oh, and here's just some very bad to best type of lighting as the International Astronom- sorry, that's the, I keep saying the International Astronomical Union. It is the International Dark Sky Association. That is who we're seeking our approval from as an internationally-recognised dark sky reserve, the IDA. So, the IDA promotes dark skies, they promote using light efficiently, in fact, using light only where needed. But as we can see here, the very bad, where you have those spherical-type light shades that scatter light in all directions, that's bad. We also have the bad ones here, which, like the Cobra Head Light, scatters in a lightwood in an upward direction. The better one is where it sort of cuts off, and that's pretty good, because it does still cause it to flood out the side, but best is where you direct all the light down to the ground where it is needed. And this has the added bonus that once you start you using light more efficiently, you can then drop the wattage bulb, because you don't have to light up so much area with a high wattage bulb. You can use a lower wattage bulb and save electricity and save the environment. So, looking at this picture here, this just breaks my heart for a number of reasons. They're using the new LED lights, and for a start, this is probably the middle of the night, and they've lit this entire stretch of highway, and there's nobody on it. So, why are the lights so bright? Why are they running at 100% brightness? This is just sheer wastage of electricity. But the other thing that's a real problem is the glare. Now, it has been found with a number of researchers around the world that glare into the eyes of a driver at nighttime increases driver fatigue. So, this glare into a driver who's driving home late at night, say, from an observatory, like myself, having this light constantly bombarded into your eyes does increase driver fatigue. It's just, it's just a major problem, and it can lead to accidents, fatigue-related accidents. The other thing that we have is the colour of the light, or what's called the colour-corrected temperature. This is where the problem lies. So, is light pollution harmful? Yes, it is. Absolutely, it is harmful. It is harmful not just for the local ecosystem in the birds and insects and what have you, but it is also harmful for human health. Let me explain. So, we have all the different types of light, the different colours of the light. Down here, we have the 2700K light, so this is the colour-corrected temperature. And you may have this in your own home, in your kitchen, you may have the cool white light 4000, maybe 5000K lights. In your lounge room, hopefully, you'll have the 3000 or 2700K lights, and same with your bedrooms. Because it's this colour-corrected temperature that presents a problem. So, we have the warm colours down here, you know, the warmish colours there, and now we, above this orange line, we start to get the cooler types of light, the more bright, the more blue-type light. And of course, that's where the problem lies. So, if we look at the, what's called the spectra of these lights, let's look at the 2700K light. Now, here's the spectra. So, if you run this through a machine called a spectroscope, it will show you all the colours of the rainbow. It's something called a continuum. You know, you've done the experiment, or you've seen a rainbow, that's what it is. It's, a rainbow is nature's spectroscope or spectrograph. It shows the white light from the sun broken up into all its colours, all its colours, all its frequencies. But this is a more precise instrument, rather than just drops of rain and mist in the night, in the sky. But what we see here is a huge amount of red, a huge amount of oranges and yellows, but we got this tiny little peak of blue, and this is where our concern lies, is this blue light. Let's look at 3000K light, and here we have 3000K light, and we see that blue response, because it is now starting to get into the higher K range, and then getting, it's, it's getting cooler, you could say. We start to see that peak blue light has increased, you know, about one more time, so increased again. Okay, that's a problem. Let's look at 4000K light. Wow, that is a substantial jump. It's almost three, in fact, four times as much as the 2700K light, and this is where the problem lies. It is in that peak blue light. The blue light is a real problem, not so bad during the day, but at nighttime, major problem. So, let's look at the freeways here. So, the freeway extension now from Romeo Road all the way down to, I think it's, what's that one called? Burns Beach Road uses the 4000K light, okay? They, they do use their lights a bit more efficiently. These types of lights do need to be installed properly. Sometimes they're a little bit wonky, and sometimes they might be shining into your eyes, and other times they may not be, or whatever. But then, of course, down in the old part of the freeway, we got the 2300K lights, the more orangey highway lights. Believe it or not, even though these are worse for the environment, they are better for your health, and vice versa. These are better for the environment, but worse for your health. Because you look at the spectral response, lots of blue light in these ones, not so much blue light in these ones. And I'll explain why the blue light is bad. So, your circadian rhythm, your stay awake, go to sleep mechanism is very important. It stems from your suprachiasmatic nucleus, or the SCN, which is kind of in the middle of your brain. It is the master clock, which is located in the SCN of the hypothalamus. Now, I'm not gonna get into brain surgery here. Basically, from your eyes, there is a retino hypothal, hypothalamic, hypothalamic tract. So, it's like a, it's a nerve that runs from your eyes to your SCN, and that can discern day and night. And one of the things that really makes it special is it uses that blue light to fire those receptors. So, that blue light is very, very important. Let me put a more simplistic picture up. So, during the day, we have lots of blue light. The colour-corrected temperature of sunlight is around between 7000 to 10000 Kelvin, okay? K, all right? So, we have this huge amount of blue light that sends a signal through your eyes to your, well, your SCN, which your pineal gland is a part of it, to not to produce melatonin, you wanna start producing serotonin. Now, that keeps you awake, so you go around your daily business, you've got lots of blue light flooding into your eyes, and it says "stay awake, stay awake, there's blue light, it's daytime, this is what you need to do." But then, when the sun sets, and that people, peak blue light diminishes, that sends another signal to your SCN, to your pineal gland, where it starts producing melatonin. Now, melatonin is this neurohormone that your body excretes, rather, your pineal gland excretes. It's known as a sleep hormone. It is a very powerful antioxidant, and it is very good for you. So, the sun goes down, melatonin starts to be produced, it starts coursing through your body, and you start feeling sleepy, and you do the sensible thing, and you go to bed, unless, of course, you're an astronomer. But you go to bed, and you have a good night's sleep with melatonin coursing through your system. This is very, very, very good for you. I remember my doctor telling me a long time ago, "Never underestimate the power of a good night's sleep." And you know what? She's right. So, with this cycle going on, it's very important to have the peak blue light during the day and no blue light at nighttime. However, as we can see in the previous graphs, our nighttime environment is now being flooded with this peak blue light. So, we're not only telling humans that don't produce melatonin, because of that blue signal coming to our brains at nighttime, we're also telling all the other wildlife, bird life, insect, amphibian, coastal marine life, "don't sleep as well," or "don't produce melatonin," and that is a major problem. In fact, it's not just restricted streetlights, it's also to your devices, most notably your phone. Now, how many of you out there look at your phone at nighttime just before going to bed? If that is you, stop it, because it is not good for you at all. Now, this causes a number of problems. This blue light, how it affects your brain and body. So, the disruption of your sleep schedule might leave you distracted, impair your memory the next day. A poor night's sleep caused by a smartphone line can make it harder to learn. This is very important for kids. I mean, kids today have their phones molecularly bonded to their persons, they never let the damn thing go. And of course, last thing, they check their Twitter account, or they check their Facebook, or they walk up one last TikTok before going to sleep, and of course, they get that blue light. And for growing minds and bodies, this is a real problem. They need that melatonin. So, if you love your kids, take them off their devices at least one hour before going to bed, just so they can get the melatonin coursing through their system, so they can grow up and be smart. Over the long term, not getting enough sleep can lead to neurotoxin buildup that makes it even harder for you to go to sleep. This starts building up this horrible cycle, that you keep looking at your phone, you don't get enough sleep, and you just keep looking at your phone, because that helps you get to sleep, but it doesn't, because it's just, it just makes it worse. So, stop looking at your phone, read a book, but not under, you know, 4000K light. Make sure it's around 2700K light and it's dim, okay? People whose melatonin levels are suppressed and whose body clocks are thrown off by light exposure are more prone to depression. We also have, researchers are investigating whether or not blue light could lead to cataracts. And also, disrupting melatonin and sleep, smartphone light can also mess with hormones that control hunger, potentially increasing obesity risk, which could lead to hard problems too. And also, there are some evidence that blue light could damage our vision by harmful, or by harming the And also, there are some evidence that blue light could damage our vision by harmful, by harming the retina over time, though more research is needed. And finally, the scariest one in the lot, there is a connection between light exposure at night and the disturbed sleep that come with it and increase the risk of breast and prostate cancers. Now, this leads me to this part here. This blue light causal chain for breast and prostate cancer, not saying that you're going to, you know, you keep looking at your phone, you're going to get breast or prostate cancer. It's just, you'll probably increase your chances of it. So, you know, it's not a good thing to do. So how it causes is your white lights with your peak blue light. Your melanopsin receptors in the lower half of the eye recognize that blue active light as it should during the day, but not at night. The blue light disrupts your circadian clock. And it is a real problem. And of course, blue light suppresses melatonin release from the pineal gland. And as we find that this suppression, continual suppression of melatonin, cancer tumors go faster when melatonin is suppressed. So there has been a study done in Spain a number of years ago where increased rate of breast and prostate cancers for people doing night shifts, like this is a prolonged problem. Or prolonged risk. But I went to a conference back in twenty eighteen to do with light pollution and presenting from the American Medical Association was the president at the time, I think, and she came into the talk, she was a neurosurgeon. And their findings at the AMA said, the AMA supports the proper conversion of community based LED lights, which reduces energy consumption and decreases the use of fossil fuels. That's a good one. Okay. Our, the AMA encourages the use of LED sources with lower melanopic or melanopic content. So less blue light that facilitates human activities after sunset and improves public health and safety during nighttime hours. What they're basically trying to say is if you want to do nighttime jogging, it'll probably be good to have some extra light. But make it a warmer light rather than a cool blue light. But also, all LED street lighting should be properly shielded to minimize glare, light trespass into homes and other potential detrimental human and environmental effects. Consideration should be given to utilize the ability of LED lighting to be dimmed in order to reduce any energy consumption and total light output, including for off peak time periods. Before widespread replacement, communities should test LEDs with different color temperature sources for citizen acceptance. Now, I'm pleased to say that when we were discussing, so the Gravity Discovery Centre and what I refer to as the Guardians of the Dark. We were discussing the problems with the rollout of the blue LED or the four thousand K lights that Western Power rolling out. And one of the people was from Western Power and we told them all about this and they went, oh wow, that's not good. So then instead of starting to roll out the four thousand K lights around the Perth metro area, they're now starting to roll out three thousand K lights. And around the streetlights, streetlights around just secondary streets where people live. They're now starting to use the lower three thousand K, in fact, twenty seven hundred K lights. Certainly around my Shire, they're starting to do that. So, and they're a lot dimmer as well. So you can see the, a bit of light, but it's not glaring what they used to be. So this is all positive steps, but there is a lot of room for improvement to go. So the fight is not over yet. So how can you guys help? How can the Shire, how can the Jinjin community help us? How can you support the, the Jinjin Dark Sky Reserve Initiative? Well, there's lots of ways you guys can help. For example, only use outdoor lights when necessary. There's no point in leaving your, end of your driveway lights blazing all night. I mean, come on. We know where you live. And if you're expecting someone, well, great. But if you're not expecting anyone, turn it off. Not helping anyone, certainly not us. Ask yourself, does my external shed need to be on all night? You may have a big shed and you may have a big floodlight out the front doorway and it's just blazing away all night. Why do you want to do that? You're wasting money. Seriously, you're just adding to your power bills. I mean, power's expensive nowadays. And of course, you know, we better want to be a bit more mindful of our environment. So, you know, darkness starts with a flick of a switch. That's it. So just turn that light off and you'll save money and you'll help us a lot as well. Can I use a sensor light instead? If you do have a shed and you think, oh, I've just got to duck out and fix this for a bit and, you know, you might want to use a torch. But as you approach, or even for security reasons, not think that anyone's going to, you know, sort of do anything untoward out here. But you have a sensor light and it suddenly pops on, it's going to scare away any potential intruders. So that works even better. So think of a, think of a sensor light if you really want to use your light to scare away, you know, possible intruders. Are my existing lights being used efficiently? Are they pointing to the ground or are they pointing straight up in the air? You might want to check that. But from what we can see from our forty five meter high tower, which gives us a fantastic view over a very, very large area of the Shire. We can't see it all, of course, but because of the curvature of the earth. But just the same, you know, we know when there's big lights blazing and what we'll do is you'll probably get a knock at the door from us. And we'll just approach you as friendly neighbors. Hey, how you doing? We're from the Gravity Discovery Centre. We've noticed you've got a very, very bright light. Do you use it for anything important and can you turn it off? We've actually had a number of successes with a neighbor just north, you know, north of us. And we explained what we did, what we want to do, and they were very, very happy to, to turn their lights off, to keep it dark. Support the shielding of existing streetlights across the Shire of Jinjin. If you notice the, the streetlights are not as glaring anymore, don't complain. In fact, just go, you beauty, they've done something about them. Now they're not shining in my eyes as I drive, you know, back home. So if you do notice some changes and we are planning to do some demonstration in the actual town of Jinjin itself to show you what a shielded street will look like, a street light will look like, then, you know, ask questions. If you want to talk to us about it, fantastic. We're all ears. Come up and, in fact, come in and have a cuppa. And we'll, we'll talk all about it if you've got any concerns. Question the need for extra street lighting. Do we really need it out here? No, we don't. We don't need extra street lighting out here. The whole thing is, you have some of these big areas lit up like that, that picture I showed you a couple of slides back where it was just this empty road and it was lit up like daylight. Some people forget to put their headlights on. And because it's so bright and they just drive home without their headlights on. Now that could be a real problem. Because normally if you're driving at nighttime, you expect a car's headlights to be on. And if they're not on, you may not be able to see them. Well, mind you, with that amount of light, you'd be able to see anything. But just the same, having those headlights even during the day, driving on country highways is a lifesaver. So, you know, with, with lights that are burning too bright, you might forget to put your street, your headlights on in your vehicle. So do we really need extra street lighting? Chances are, no, we don't. Take pride in making the Shire of Jinjin the dark sky capital of WA by keeping your lights off or your outside lights off or on a sensor. And only use them when you really, really have to. Because just imagine that, you're a part of this grand community idea to keep the skies dark, to keep the stars bright. Because I can tell you this, once light pollution takes hold, it is very, very, very difficult to get rid of. Down in Perth, where I live, it is heartbreaking to come home for a shift, from a shift up at the observatory. So my office is the observatory and when I look up, I can see the Milky Way. I can see all sorts of things just with a naked eye. And I feel very privileged to do that. But when I get home and I look up, I can't see the Milky Way. I can see a few bright stars and it's just awful. It really is. And communicate. Talk about dark skies to, you know, dark skies of Jinjin to visitors and tourists, anyone you come across. You see some stranger in town, hello, who are you? Oh yeah, did you realize you're in a dark sky reserve? Oh, what's that? Well, let me tell you all about it. And if you don't know all about it, well, we've got lots of brochures. You can point them in the right direction and they can learn all about it and get excited about it too. So we had an instance up at the Bundanaring Sand Mine. They started operations a couple of years ago now and we noticed this huge glow coming from the northeast of us and climbing the tower, saw this massive city, just suddenly that sprung up. So we made an appointment to see the, the site managers and we went and had a chat with them. And I must say, they had a bit of a chuckle when we said, we're here to talk to you about your lights. Because they said, it's funny because normally when people complain about mine sites, they complain, complain about the dust, the noise or the dust, the dust. First time anyone's complained about the lights and it's like, well, here we are. So after a bit of discussion and they said, how can we help? And that was absolutely marvelous because we approached them as good neighbors. So the instance was they had a setup similar to this where they had a big floodlight, flooding light out onto the workshop area or out onto the areas outside. And of course, a lot of the light was going up and past the horizontal plane. So we just asked them, can you shield your lights or turn your lights pointing down to the ground? And they did. And with just a simple fix of shielding your lights, it reduces the amount of light being scattered up. And like I said, the light gets used more efficiently. But they actually went above and beyond the call of duty and actually closed their service bay doors to their very, very large shed, which was producing quite a lot of light pollution. So now we can barely see them from the ground. In fact, we can't even see them at all. But when we climb the tower, we can just see a couple of little bright lights out on the northeastern horizon. And, you know, whilst it'd be good to, you know, turn them off all completely, we understand that they've got a business to run. And we understand that, you know, some lights have to be on for, for safety and that such in that, in that way. So that's not a problem. It's better than what it was. Now, of course, what we want to do around the Shire of Jinjin, of course, is get rid of these fish bowls down here of the Cobra head light. And just put a flat piece of perspex or what other type of material across the front here to create a fully shielded light, to direct light down to the ground where it is needed and not being scattered in all directions willy nilly. In fact, there's a wheat belt town not too far from here that at the behest of a Japanese amateur astronomer, Japanese astronomer, forgive me, he wasn't an amateur. He was an astronomer and also a world renowned astrophotographer. He had all the streetlights converted to ones like this. So the light pollution coming from the local streetlights, which is only about five of them in the town, weren't causing a light pollution problem. And the, the Shire said, yep, we can do that for you. And they did. It's unfortunate now that someone complained if it's a bit too dark. Not that anyone really walks around on that town at nighttime, but they reinstalled this. So for me now, there's another fight on to actually get these things reinstalled and get these things removed. Now, think globally, act locally. This is the best way to go. So all sorts of ground swell changes have happened with just a single idea and a single person. Now, when we look at this picture here, this was taken in November twenty seventeen. And what we can see down here is of course, we've got Perth and Yanchip and Bulls Brook and Mouchay. And we've got a plane. And then of course, we've got the Brand Highway and that little blip down there is of course, is Jinjin Town itself. But look at this thing right here. This is the Gravity Discovery Centre and in the back is AEGO. AEGO is the Australian International Gravitational Observatory or Gravitational Wave Observatory. And of course, it is lit up like Times Square on New Year's Eve. And we thought, when I first saw this and took this photo, I thought, you know what? We need to lead by example. And we need to show people that some simple fixes can go from this to that. Now, as you can see, the lighting output of our centers, both our centers has diminished dramatically with two simple fixes. Especially from here, from the Gravity Discovery Centre. The first fix was, we turned off the light to the ice cream fridge. The second one was, we made a cover for our drinks fridge. And that's it. Just those two simple fixes improved our surroundings dramatically. And in fact, since then, we've further improved it by removing and also turning off a number of television screens in our main center. But also this green light here was from our emergency escape light, which has actually been modified now to suit a dark sky environment. And also AEGO, their lighting systems has changed as well. So now we are almost completely dark. And that's just with a couple of simple inexpensive fixes. So you can do that too. It's not that hard. In fact, it's probably easier for you guys. You just need to flick a switch and it turns off. Now, the benefits of keeping the Jinjin Sky, Shire dark, basically, well, this is for the community. So the dark environment, you get better sleep, better health. Certainly better than what you get down in Perth and the southern, or the northern suburbs or any suburbs for that matter. The darker environment, better for livestock, sheep, cows, goats, whatever. They sleep a lot better. In fact, some people are worried about someone's going to come and run off with my goats or my sheep or whatever. Why do you want to light them up? You're just giving the sheep rustlers or whatever to, an opportunity, see where they are and grab them. So if they're in the dark, they can have a bit of a time trying to find them. And if they start waving torches around, you're going to get a little bit suspicious. If you see torches waving around on your plot of land, it's the time to go out there on your ATV and shoo them away. Now, a darker environment for the protection and health of local wildlife, bird, insect, amphibian and coastal marine life. And that also includes plants as well. Some plants rely on night and day cycles as well. So healthier environment would go a long way. And the Dark Sky Reserve official designation will hopefully attract more local, interstate and international visitors. And also space and astronomical research collaborations. So not only will we be the dark sky capital of WA, we'll be the space capital of WA. How cool will that be? You'll have all these space assets here in Jinjin. And from coast to cosmos, aim to boost numbers and of course, tourist dollars coming into the local economy. So boosting local tourism and accommodation providers. Because a lot of people seem to just drive through along Indian Ocean Road or Brand Highway and just go zipping through the Shire of Jinjin. Wouldn't it be nice to capture them and make them stay a while? Because hey, Shire of Jinjin has got a lot to offer. Like I said, from coast to cosmos and everything in between. Why not? It's like it's better than the wine country, if you ask me. So the astronomy and the astronomy capital of WA, well, science, well, most notably astronomy tourism is a booming division in WA tourism. So the GDC Observatory is the best place to explore the universe because hey, we have a dedicated public astronomical observatory here. And it's only an hour's drive north of the Perth CBD. So it's ease of travel to dark skies, to big telescopes and also to people who know what they're talking about. That's a very important thing. And currently, the GDC and Observatory attracts around thirty thousand visitors to the region every single year. We also encourage visitors to explore the surrounding towns. It's like I said, from coast to cosmos. The towns along the coast are absolutely stunning. You know, you can stay there and come to the GDC or explore the town of Jinjin or everywhere in between. So this will be a great way to capture people and make them stay. Even closer to local accommodation and local tourist attractions. I want to have a big shout out to Rona. I did a live sky broadcast from her property just near south of Gilderton. And it was a lovely place. And you know what? I'm still toying with the idea of coming out there and staying there with the family for a couple of nights because it's a lovely getaway. And like I said, it's only an hour's drive north of Perth. You know, you can get away on a Friday night and off you go. Oh, look at this. We've got a, just interrupting us. Hello, everyone. We've got a whole bunch of people. We've got about something, how many? Fifty students tonight? We've got about fifty students come filing into the observatory. They're here to explore the, the wonderful cosmos above us through our fantastic telescopes. So yeah, they're just, if you hear all footsteps and scrapings, that's them. It's not me. But hello, everyone. Just keep going through. So, and it's also a great reason to visit and to stay a while. Because like I said, an hour's drive north of Perth, absolutely brilliant. You can get away from, or for us Perthites, you know, get away on a Friday afternoon and hello. Get away on a Friday afternoon, you'll be here in, you know, paradise and only an hour's drive. Well, traffic notwithstanding, of course, but just the same, you'll still be able to make it. So why keep it dark? Well, we've got this thing that we do every single year. That's okay. Come on in, folks. Wow, there's a lot of you. My goodness, yeah, there is supposed, there is fifty of you tonight. So yeah, come on through. Like I said, we've got, we've got a bunch of students coming in tonight to, and it's a clear night too, which is a, which is an absolute bonus. I think they really lucked out tonight. Because earlier today, it was absolute rubbish, but now they're going to get to see the Milky Way in all its glory from the dark skies here at the, you know, Shire of Jinjin. But we do this annual thing. And we've actually done it last year and this year, and it's the annual Jinjin Dark Sky Star Party. Yes, we have a dark sky star party we, we aim to put on every single year to attract people to come to stay. Oh yeah, there you go. Thanks, Stuart. That's all right. One of my colleagues had to get one of the light controllers. To attract people to the region, but also to get you guys to learn more about the wonderful skies you have in your own backyard. I am super jealous. I really am. So it's held at the Near Gabby Campgrounds and it's a fantastic spot. It allows for camping, but it's also within spitting distance of some pretty nice accommodation. So it's the perfect place to do it. And it's only just off the main highway as well. Participants of the Star Party are encouraged to bring their own telescopes, binoculars, or even just their eyes to enjoy the beautiful Jinjin Dark Sky Reserve. Now, participants, participants of the Star Party are encouraged to stay the weekend like a mini getaway. So it's closer than Margaret River and cheaper too. And I think the accommodation's better as well. And it's designed to attract visitors, local and interstate, to visit the Shire of Jinjin's Dark Sky Reserve. But also capture northbound road But also capture northbound road travellers to drop in and stay at local accommodation or even just park their caravans up in a local caravan park or even pitch a tent. That's the general idea of it. But also encourage star party attendees to explore and spend tourist dollars within the Shire of Jinjin. So this is a way that we're hoping will get bigger and bigger every single year. There's a number of star parties around the world that are huge, huge events, especially there's one in Japan called the Tainai Star Party that attracts twenty thousand visitors over three days. Now, if we can get to that kind of level, wow, that is what we're aiming for. It would be amazing. It'll be like Woodstock but without the rock bands and telescopes instead. But, I mean, all of our astronomers are rock stars anyway, so there you go. It'll kind of work. But, so activities at the Near Gabby Campgrounds, it's conducted over two nights, so Friday and Saturday nights. Camping is optional. In fact, if you do want to bring attendance, stay the night, it's highly encouraged because it is a beautiful place to camp. So activities include observing through large telescopes, which we do supply here from the Gravity Discovery Centre Observatory. We drag up our observatory telescopes. So if you don't have your own telescope, you can look through ours. In fact, one of our board members, the last two years, has bought his large sixty five centimetre telescope. It's not sixty five centimetres long, the mirror is sixty five centimetres across. In old scale measurements, it's a twenty five inch. And the views through that thing are just stunning. You actually have to climb a ladder to get to the eyepiece. So there's a sense of occasion for that. So bring your own telescope, binoculars or eyes, or bring your own cameras and astrophotography gear to capture those photons that are unimpeded by the light pollution of Perth, because like I said, we've got dark skies here in the Shire of Jinjin. We also have a Nyungar elder that comes up and tells the local Aboriginal stories and star lore from the perspective of the Nyungar people, the traditional caretakers of the southwest of Western Australia. And it's a really, really amazing atmosphere out amongst the trees and the very, very low light and the stars blazing overhead. It is pretty darn impressive. Oh, there's, there's the thing there. That's Dr Noel Nannup, who does our local Aboriginal astronomy evenings here at the observatory, but he does come up to the Near Gabby site and tells the stories. And of course, he's well known by the UED mob, who's, this is part of their ancestral lands. So, they've worked it out amongst themselves, which is really, really good. Now, daytime events we have at the GDC precinct, we have guest speakers. Here is one of my colleagues, Hayden, who was doing a fantastic talk saying, entitled, "Space and How It Will Kill You." It is, we also have researchers from the Zadco Observatory talking about their research. But we also have the Zadco Telescope, the main research telescope, open up with the researchers telling you about all the stuff that they do and how the telescope works. But also we have solar viewing, so we get to observe our local star, our sun, through specialised solar telescopes at the Gravity Discovery Centre Observatory. But also, why do we keep it dark? So for the protection of local Aboriginal culture. So the UED, Wajuk, Nyungar astronomical star lore and sky stories, their stories are intertwined amongst the dark dust lanes of the Milky Way and also the stars of the Milky Way Galaxy. And, you know, it's more than just the, the Greco-Roman constellations we're so familiar with, like the constellation of the Zodiac. Some of them are a little bit weird. You don't even know what they are supposed to represent, but the Nyungar constellations actually look like what they're supposed to. And they're much, much, much older. We're talking sixty five thousand years of history as compared to only a few thousand years from the Greek constellations. So it is absolutely fascinating to have this far more ancient view on the already ancient night sky. So like I said, we're drawing upon sixty thousand years of astronomical knowledge and culture and history of the local environment and the sky. But also astronomical research, like I said, with the Zadco Telescope and the Falcon Telescope from the United States Air Force Academy, along with JAXA, Pulsar and Ariane Airbus Group and how we have a unique observational longitude astronomy education. We're teaching future scientists, astronomies and astronomy and astrophysicists right here. And hopefully, in the not too distant future, we'll be developing a new observatory, our multi-messenger observatory, where we'll incorporate not just optical telescopes, but research telescopes with instruments on the back, but also radio telescopes too. And of course, the environment and wildlife, so the protection of our delicate ecosystem that makes the Shire of Jinjin unique. And also provide a dark sky sanctuary for people to stay overnight, reset the circadian rhythm and probably have some opportunities for ecotourists ventures to spring up. In fact, a colleague of mine is thinking of starting up a venture here within the Shire of Jinjin based around the Dark Sky Reserve. I'm not going to say too much. But he, he'll be coming back from France very soon. And hopefully come here to live, which will be absolutely marvellous. And he'll be starting up a venture because of the dark skies. You'll find out more about that later on. So, the actual area that we're encompassing is the entire Shire of Jinjin. It's over three thousand square kilometres, but we're adding to it parts of the city of Wanaroo and also the Shire of Chittering to create a bit of a buffer zone between us and light pollution central. So, the entire Dark Sky Reserve encompasses over three and a half thousand square kilometres. If you want to be picky, three thousand five hundred and twenty six square kilometres. And, excuse me, what we do is to monitor how dark our skies are. We use one of these things. Now, it just looks like a stick with a can on the end of it. Well, it actually is. But within the can is an instrument called a sky quality meter. So the one that we have here on the roof of the observatory constantly logs how dark the sky is and has been doing so for the last three years every ten minutes. And we're getting some amazing data. In fact, we've been looking at a number of trend lines. And I'm very excited to say that those trend lines are actually starting to become darker. Now, that is very exciting. We are hoping it is the diminishment or the increasing diminishing light pollution dome from Perth because of sensible lighting, but we will explore all possibilities to see if this is true. But another thing we want to do, and this is where the community comes in, is looking, installing remote sensing stations at these red arrows and expanding that. So, if that's anywhere near your property, you may get a knock on the door from us and saying, hi, we have a large box on a stick. We would like to put in one of your fields. Can we please do that? That'd be really, really good because what we'll be doing is constantly monitoring the dark skies from those points to keep a check on how dark our skies are and to keep them dark. The power of science is amazing, folks. And these are the hotspots at the moment. I mean, of course, down here, let me get my mouse where it'll go. There it is. Down here, of course, we have Yanchip. There's not much we can do about that. But certainly, there's the Boonanaring Sand Mine. Well, we can certainly, you know, try and figure something out with that. But of course, we've got Gilderton and Lancelin and Seabird, et cetera. There's Gilderton down here, forgive me. And of course, there's us because we're pretty much across the way from them. But there's also a couple of little hotspots like the RAAF Jinjin and a few other bits and pieces. There's the, another mineral mine somewhere there. But these little hotspots, some of them are transient, some of them are permanent, but we can always work and improve. There's always room for improvement and that's what we want to do. So, if you do get a knock at the door and it's us, you know, don't shoo us away. Have a listen to what we've got to say and, hey, you might be able to help us out on this thing, which is all we ask. Now, we're proud to say that the Gravity Discovery Centre was a pivotal part on the creation of this position statement, which was published by the Department of Planning, Lands and Heritage, the state government of WA. And this was published in January twenty twenty two. And this is a position statement on dark skies and astrotourism. It basically outlines all the best practices for keeping the skies dark as illustrated or as outlined by the International Dark Sky Association. So it uses a lot of their ideas, but also they've added bits and pieces to hopefully improve the management of any light pollution within the Shire. And this is an absolute windfall because this just doesn't, just doesn't affect the Shire of Jinjin. This affects all the Shire councils across WA where there's an astronomical point of interest. So, this is a fantastic step into making not just our skies, but WA skies darker. And we're proud to say that we actually had a pivotal role in the creation of this document because it was us who got the ball rolling and by a chance, meeting with one of my local members, asking, does any of these parliamentary colleagues, could they help us out? And of course, he put me in touch with the Planning Minister's Office. They got in touch with me. We got the ball rolling. We were working together. In fact, I had to do a number of presentations in front of the WA Planning Committee to get this thing through. There they are. They came to visit us up at the observatory. And it was the chairperson who basically took me aside and said, I can see now why you want what you want to protect, which is very exciting. So, you know, it might have happened eventually, but we just really pushed the issue and we got it through. And we are proud to say that we had a big stake in this position statement to actually make this happen, make this a reality. We put our money where our mouth is and made it work. So, the Guardians of the Dark, let me introduce you to the Guardians of the Dark. Of course, we have the Department of Planning, Lands and Heritage, the state government of Western Australia. There, of course, is the Shire of Jinjin. And working with the Shire of Jinjin has been absolutely fantastic. I must have a big shout out to Aaron Cook, CEO, but also to Kylie Bacon as well. In the planning department, she has been an unstoppable machine. And working with those guys has been an absolute pleasure. And also, I must say to the councillors at the Shire of Jinjin, they've listened to me many a times present about the dark skies and they got very excited and to see their excitement and their interest in it is, has been so encouraging. In fact, that's what's been driving us. So, we want to be the first in WA. If we're not, as long as we become one, I really don't care. As long as we protect our skies. Also, the city of Wanaroo, I had a meeting with the mayor at the time and it was wonderful. The Main Roads Department, Western Power and just recently the Shire of Chittering. So, we've got them on board because a part of their land is within the Dark Sky Reserve. And the more they can do to protect their night skies and help us out, the better. In fact, maybe in the not too distant future, I should say, we may look expanding the Dark Sky Reserve into encompass the entire Shire of Chittering as well. Now, if that's the case, well, that would actually make us the largest dark sky reserve in the world. Currently, that is in New Zealand, centred around the Mount John Observatory in the Canterbury Plains, Mackenzie country actually, Lake Tekepo, Lake Pukaki, around that region there. But it'll be good to get one over the Kiwis, you know, but I can't say that because some of my cousins are Kiwis, but there you are. But just the same, oh, they'll remind me of the underarm bowling incident. Don't you worry about that. But just the same. You know what? If we just get the Dark Sky Reserve, I'll be over the moon. No pun intended. But, the most important addition to the Guardians of the Night, I firmly believe, is the residents and the businesses of the Jinjin community, you guys. We, we need your support. We really do. To have you guys behind us, to have this groundswell of community behind this initiative would be the best. So, support us in any way you can. Turn off your lights, talk to us. If you, like I said, if you have any questions, email us or give us a call. You know, call up the Gravity Discovery Centre, or even if you're passing by, drop in for a cuppa and say, hey, what's this Dark Sky Reserve business all about? Well, I've just told you most of it, but if you didn't get to see it, well, you've always got tomorrow night. But just the same, we love talking to our neighbours because that's what neighbours do. We've already made a submission to the International Dark Sky Association and we're just, well, not so much waiting for the approval. We've got a couple of little things that we still need to do with a couple of little, you know, Ts to cross and Is to dot and boxes to tick. But currently, our application is pending, so our Dark Sky Reserve title is pending. But, and we are working hard to actually make that a reality, to get that stamp of approval, that dark sky approved dark sky reserve, which would be absolutely fantastic to have on the billboards as you approach the Shire of Jinjin. You are now entering a dark sky reserve. Now, in conclusion, if we are successful in our endeavours to create WA's first international dark sky reserve, that is a very, very, very good thing, not just for the astronomy stuff going on here, but also for the local ecosystem, for the local cultural heritage, for everything else for you guys. So, if we're successful, we will be the first internationally recognised dark sky reserve in Western Australia and the fifth dark sky place in Australia. So dare I say, the future for the Gravity Discovery Centre Observatory is looking very, very dark and so too with the Shire of Jinjin, but that's a good thing. But I want people to come away and say, the stars are not brighter in Jinjin, the sky is darker in Jinjin. And that is very, very important. So, there we have it, folks. That is pretty much what I can explain to you about the Dark Sky Reserve. But if you want any more information, I do have, and I'm just going to duck off camera for a little bit. We do have a brochure that we have been putting out. In fact, there should be some up at the local cafe near Jinjin Brook. But also, should be some up at the local council. And that is this one here. I'll just try and turn it so it doesn't get so much reflection. There we are. The Guardians of the Dark, the Jinjin Dark Sky Reserve, there we are there. And within it is pretty much everything I've explained about light pollution. I'll just turn it this way and try not to get the light reflecting on it, about light pollution and all sorts of things, peak blue light problems. And of course, outlining the Guardians of the Dark and of course, the Jinjin Dark Sky map over here. There it is there. And of course, any more information, you just, all our contact details are there. So pick up one of these, become informed, become educated about what it is and support us. That's all we ask. To have your support will be incredible. So folks, I've already gone for six minutes over what I'm supposed to because I tend to yak a lot and you'll find that if we do ever meet face to face, I just won't shut up, but that's who I am. So folks, it's been great that you could join us tonight. Don't forget, we do have another session on tomorrow evening, starting at the same time. It would be great if you could tell all your friends and colleagues about us. But until then, we bid you a good night. Enjoy the rest of your evening. And hopefully we'll see you around, not around the town, but hopefully, or hopefully around town, but hopefully around these dark skies.